Good evening, everyone. We have a few folks that we need to remember tonight. One is Donnie Hall.
Yeah, President, I think you still muted.
You're right, thank you.
Please talk.
Thank you. So we have a few folks we want to remember tonight. The first being is Donnie Hall. He was a Newburyport police officer who passed away the end of August. He started in Amesbury in 1984, came to Newburyport shortly thereafter, and he retired December of 2009. He was a safety officer for the department where he was responsible for multiple AAA awards, and he was also on the motorcycle unit, member of the Blue Knights Law Enforcement Motorcycle Association. The next person to remember is Edward Carter. Mr. Carter passed away September 2nd. Lifelong Newbury Porter, graduated from Newburyport High in 1966, and went on to get his education degree from Salem State. Began his teaching career in 1970 at the Jackman School where he taught history. In 1972, he embarked on his lifelong career at the Rupert A. Knott Middle School in Newburyport, teaching 7th and 8th graders earth science for the remainder of his 36-year career. Infamous for his mud walks in the salt marshes, building Rube Goldberg machines, chemistry experiments, and dory trips at Lowell's Boat Shop. Loved influencing minds and creating fun challenges in the classroom. Sounds like a wonderful teacher. He will be missed. The next person to remember is Joyce Ann Duffy. She is the mother of Special Projects Manager Ken Turner. She grew up in Portland, Maine, was a dental hygienist, but I think we all know her from her second career where she became a master gardener through the University of Maine Co-op Extension Program. She came to Newbury after her second grandchild was born and integrated into the community where she lived, became a surrogate mom and grandmother to countless children, and she was known as Grandby to many, someone else who will be missed. And last but not least, there will be someone else who will be talking about this person during public comment, but we do need to remember what today is. 22 years ago, Thomas Pecorelli, native Newbury Porter, lost his life in one of the flights that hit the World Trade Center. Clerk Jones actually sent me a picture of him. His profession was, he was a videographer, and he was taping council meetings. He went on to become a successful videographer, and he was a life whose time was ended too early. I think we all need to remember what happened 22 years ago today and keep all of those folks in our mind tonight with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting of September 11th, Monday night, 7:00 PM. Councilor Lane, absent. Councilor McCauley?
Here.
Councilor Preston?
Here.
Councilor Vogel?
Present.
Councilor Wallace?
Here.
Councilor Wright?
Yeah.
Councilor Zied?
Here.
Councilor Cameron?
Here.
Councilor Donahue?
Here.
Councilor Khan?
Present.
Councilor Shan?
Present.
All right. Are there any late files? There are two. The first is Communication 505, a letter from Kristen Hunter regarding Merrimack Street traffic safety progress, slated to go to Public Works and Safety. An Order 489, temporary parking plan, also to go to Public Works and Safety.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files.
Second.
With one minor change on the Order 489, I would suggest that we continue that to a date certain of September 26th. I'm happy to speak to why if anyone would like to know.
Second.
Yeah. So just, the Parking Advisory Committee spent a lot of time on this, and I mean, if the committee wants it, they can certainly have it, but I think that it's been kind of beat up at this point and refined, so it's a question of committees, sort of out of respect for the committee's time. So I would defer to the Chair. If they want it, they can have it, but otherwise, we can hang on to it until September 26th and go on and talk about it then.
Oh, Councilor Wallace?
I, we're okay not taking it into our committee if it's been vetted already. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, President.
Councilor McCauley?
Yeah, it just, it comes with an emergency preamble, so that was listed here, so I'm not sure if we want to move both of them together to that, and we'll receive and file the emergency preamble.
Probably the easiest thing.
I would just, we can just receive and file the emergency. When the clerk drafted this, they had originally asked if maybe, as a sponsor, but not the only one suggested it probably wasn't a good idea, so we can just receive and file that and be done with it.
All right, so, who wants to bring the, accept the late files? Roll call. Well, I take that back. We don't have anybody online, so we can't do. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? All right. Public comment. For those on Zoom, if you'd like to raise your hand now while the clerk gets to get to the board. If I don't see any hands, we'll assume there's, all right, I see one hand, James Cullen. Are there any others on Zoom who would like to speak? Please raise your hand now. All right, seeing no hands, Mr. Cullen, allowing you to speak. You have name, address, and two minutes, please.
Thank you very much. I think I can have a reading, James Cullen. I'm on my way to remembering, and I can't watch it. Excuse me when I ask you twice. I'm here to record here. I hope this is pretty much over the discussion, but myself and some fellow members here have submitted an application for approval of the block party in the original section of Newbury, and we respectfully request that the City Council approve this expeditiously.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Appreciate that. I'm sure that will go, get vetted and approved. All right. Thank you. And then Sarah Hayden.
Just want to make sure this is the right. I did notice that a lot of you councillors don't have your microphones on, but we'll talk about that another time. Hello, my name is Sarah Hayden. I'm the Executive Director of our local community media center, NCM Hub. I'm here tonight to honor and remember Tom Pecorelli. To those of you who may not know the name Thomas Pecorelli, Tom was a passenger on American Airlines Flight 11 that was part of the September 11 attacks. This is from a blog post on one of the many 9/11 memorial websites. Thomas Nicholas Pecorelli was only 12-years-old when he landed his first job as cameraman. As an apprentice for his local television station in Newburyport, Massachusetts, he captured town events like city council meetings on video. He also served as class historian at Newburyport High School where he often brought a camera along to document school events. I first learned of Tom Pecorelli's participation in community media from Richie Eaton, who had worked with Tom when he was filming local high school sports. After earning a degree in communications from the University of Massachusetts, Pecorelli followed his dream around the country, moving from New England to Florida to work at a local station in Fort Myers. He occasionally emerged from behind the scenes, appearing in short comedic segments that highlighted his talent for impressions, impersonations. He also spent time at a station in Tucson, Arizona, before moving to Los Angeles to work for the Fox Network in 1996. Pecorelli was behind the camera for Fox Sports Studio programs, entertainment shows like Talk Soup on E! Entertainment Television, and occasionally worked high-profile events such as the Academy Awards, Red Carpet Rivals. While living in Los Angeles, he met his wife Kia. They married in October 1999, and in the summer of 2001, they learned that they were expecting their first child. On September 11th, 2001, Pecorelli boarded American Airlines Flight 11 at Logan International Airport in Boston, returning home from a trip where he attended a friend's wedding and visited his family and friends living in Massachusetts. In 2002, the New York chapter of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences recognized Thomas Pecorelli's contributions to the television industry with an honorary Emmy. Thomas Pecorelli's family donated his award to the 9/11 Memorial Museum as a testament to his passion for broadcasting. It is currently on display in the museum's in memoriam gallery, where visitors are also invited to explore the touchscreen tables to learn more about Thomas Pecorelli's life and career. Pecorelli's family also honored his love of broadcasting with an annual scholarship awarded to Newburyport High School students who shared his talent for the arts. The last recipient of this scholarship was awarded to Maeve Power, who is currently working at NCM Hub. We will not forget you, Tom, and we hold your family in our hearts and prayers on this day of remembrance. Thank you. Thank you.
That is it for public comment. Mayor's comments, I believe Mayor is actually... Mayor Riordan, do you want to speak?
I'm hoping you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, I think I'm, but, well, first, I just want to say thanks to Sarah for bringing up Tom. Yesterday, we had the field of honor ceremony at Brooklyn Mall, and I appreciate Council President for being there. You know, pretty good turnout, but that's always a great ceremony, and of course, we talked about Tom at that event. I remember Tom, he got a little bit of heat, but of course, he worked with Richie in every basketball game, and I remember every basketball they do like that, girls' games, but I went to a bowling games as well, but I can still picture Tom sitting behind the camera, and he was just a super kid, great people, great family, great friends, and of course, he's very, very nice. I also appreciate all the references that we gained. Now, it's time to shout to the President. You know, Joyce Duffy, just a tremendous lady, you know, a kid's loss of a community of, particularly to play. If you know Ken, you know how hard she was getting this cast to you, and she would notice on one side every second, Julie, her five kids are, so again, our thoughts and prayers with Ken and all of her family. Few, you know, and so, actually, that was, remember that, hopefully, you know, I started by having a company with George Hill Gasoline last week. George Hill was one of the national two veterans here in the city. Most people remember George's letters to the mayor around an ambulance service that got at the fire department. That was his passion, was that, he actually called the armed men, he came to that house, borrowed seats, and wrote a book for supportive information and information around giving ambulance service back in the battle that he was at. He was very simple, and he cared about the city, not so, I'm going to remember that at a late date, but I've done lots of work, so to speak, to most families. So, I'm glad, so, I don't know if I, I won't cheat or cut, but I will just touch on a few things. Market Day in Park and the bulkhead project are underway, they're mobilizing a little bit more on the speed, uh, speed online, have a big project has shown up today for the bulkhead project that will already be as late as it may, but that one, we started offensive and pushed back, so, we're looking, it's coming into the park and bulkhead projects. We work with, with our company, so we'll have stuff for contractors to plug in to the right side of the fishing pier, and we have a piece from, uh, we're going to go back to our, we go, so the city's sort of holding out right now, HTO, and I hope it'll be starting and getting back to the little parking lot on Tickle Street next to the, the block, but I do think in general, I was willing to listen in to the parking, you know, before this, but I do think we have eight weeks, so I'm probably going to be real excited about the last couple of these, and so we'll have to just keep honoring that as we get into the fall. What else? We're talking, Brown School, Brown School, we're trying to get the show to everyone on September 8th. We have four contractors submit, the four proposals that are submitted. I haven't seen one yet, so the plan is, is for the planning office and the mayor to go through this this week. We have an assessment process that we're going to go through those for them, and they'll write them, and then we have a program to gather a lot of the proposals that some of the large council, I believe, on Thursday. I'm sorry. Project now is proceeding as planned. You know, as you know, we run the gates for the project, a lot of it comes from the P dot we got, we cover the high line levels, reference and okay, so we work very hard on, we have to bring up at least two different contractors in on this project. We have this meeting on Saturday, and there's some, there's a lot of pressure for the two to that process, and I got the work going, continuing that through the pipeline, and also the playground portion of that project will start this week. You'll start seeing some of the old playground materials that we moved, we'll, we'll then , and, more about waiting for the next couple of weeks, and then the installation later to start, so we're excited for that project to get going as well. And that's probably it, I just can't see my phone, so I was going to drive to the car, so, I also want to mention back to school, back to school, like, break back to school with our kids, the left thing I did mention, I was in the paper today. We're also looking for some safety laws, for crosswalks, crossing guards. This is not, nothing new, but we're speaking here, we're very sure of crossing guards. We're thinking by low signs, we'll be hiding crossing areas and then others. We try to fill up the mail, so we are having a senior speaking with police and schools. We're now opening up to the senior patrol tracks, we're about four more, so we're hoping that we'll have to do all the papers in, we have a little bit of interest, and we'll just keep on in that situation, not keep the city council involved, but all of the great stuff for school here, and I guess that will be just some people to, but I think that, after this, to the school here, they're starting to be a best. Any questions?
Council Vogel.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The one item on the, your update that I had a question about, I do appreciate the comment about recreation and youth services going to 59 Low Street, and I certainly do look forward to the conversation about what you have in mind. Could you comment, please, and if it's maybe not convenient at this exact moment, maybe you could put it out in a memo via email or however, about the updating, update us on the, what's happening with the plans for the build-out and so on and so forth?
Sure, yeah, I, I, so I found, just, I didn't have any update on the design. EGA is still working through the design process. Again, our special projects manager and NYX director haven't heavily evolved this design. We haven't had an update, we did get the big file a little bit ago, but we're not fully designed yet, so we're still waiting for that. And like I said, the only other mention of recreation and youth services that I had that happened tonight was, next meeting, and there's certainly being a September, I won't be submitting officially, but eight more, in order to establish the Recreation and Youth Services Department as official department here in Newburyport. So, and if I did any kind of update before our next meeting around the size of 59 Low Street, I'll be sure to get that out to all of you in a moment.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing no hands. Just so the folks online know, this is only for councillors to ask questions, and Clerk Sullivan, just so you know, Councilor Lane has joined us remotely. All right, thank you, Mayor.
I don't need any questions.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Okay, this evening's consent agenda consists of the approval of the minutes of the August 28th meeting, Communications, Communication 503, the extension of the acting head librarian appointment to go to General Government, Communication 504, the Whittier Regional Operational Budget to be received and filed, and Application 158, the Block Party on Hancock Street on September 30th to go to License and Permits. There's One Transfer, 168, the North Jetty Side Dredge Project to the Boat Waste Pump Replacement, $11,319 to go to Budget and Finance. The following items are to come out of the committees this evening, Budget and Finance, Communication 499 and Transfer 166, Community Services, Appointment 425 and Communication 501. License and Permits, Application 157. Planning and Development, Appointments 424, 432, and 433. Public Works and Safety, Appointment 431 and 434. Communications 497 and 498, and Ordinance 159. And that is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve, and also to add the receiving file on the Mayor's update.
Second. Go on the order. Councilor McCauley?
Yeah, I'd like to change Communication 503 from General Government to Community Services.
Second.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the caller for the application for the Black, the Block Party on Hancock Street, just assure that person that we will hold the meeting in plenty of time, and next, next city council meeting will be a solid week before, they'll be okay.
Anything else? All right, roll call. Councilor Lane?
Here.
Councilor McCauley?
Yes.
Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Councilor Vogel?
Yes.
Councilor Wallace?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zied?
Yes.
Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Councilor Donahue?
Yes.
Councilor Khan?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
All right, regular agenda. Not too much for the first five. No? So that gets us to orders. The first order is 486, the digital signage gift acceptance for $967.
Motion to refer this and the next one collectively to Budget and Finance?
Second. Do you want to read in the next one for the...
487.
487 is the lead service line grant acceptance at $207,800. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
All right, roll call, I'm moving those to Budget and Finance. Okay, roll call. Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Councilor McCauley?
Yes.
Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Councilor Vogel?
Yes.
Councilor Wallace?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zied?
Yes.
Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Councilor Donahue?
Yes.
Councilor Khan?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
Next is Order 488, Emergency Preamble for the Temporary 15-Minute Parking Spaces on State Street, and the Order 488 for the Temporary Parking Spaces on State Street.
Motion to waive the rules and approve the emergency preamble and the underlying order on that list. Second.
Vogel? Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Councilor McCauley?
Yes.
Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Councilor Vogel?
Yes.
Councilor Wallace?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zied?
Yes.
Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Councilor Donahue?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
That brings us to ordinances. There's one, it's the second reading of ord...
Wait, we had to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Discuss 488.
No, it was all, all my...
You did it all on...
Oh.
Oh, and that, and we voted to approve as well? Oh, great, sorry.
Just so everyone knew, that was the temporary parking in front of the Institute for...
I thought we were just waiving the rules for the preamble. I'm glad with it one way or the other. Yeah.
Sorry.
All right. We're good. Okay, Ordinance 158, it's the second reading, it's the Low Street Perry Way Parking Restrictions.
Motion to approve on second reading. Second.
Vogel? Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Councilor McCauley?
Yes.
Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Councilor Vogel?
Yes.
Councilor Wallace?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zied?
Yes.
Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Councilor Donahue?
Yes.
Councilor Khan?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
And that brings us to committee. Counselor Zied?
Motion to receive and file Communication 499, year-end financial report.
Second.
So this is, as the title states, this is an FY23 end-of-year report that just ended at the end of June of this year. We have the actual report itself, but the finance director who's here and available for questions, I'm sure, also put together a nice slide deck that we went through in our committee meeting recently, which was on August 31st, and he went through the highlights here. This presentation is on the meeting post along with the minutes and the recording of the meeting, if you'd like, so I will do my best to take his summary and summarize the summary, so it's an inception problem here. So, basically, overall, it was a decent year in terms of revenue. About 98.3% of the budget was spent as of the end of the year. One of the first slides in the deck talks about the largest remaining balances at the end of the year, so these are a portion of what becomes free cash, and really, it really comes down to two specific categories, for the most part. Number one is debt service was less than expected. This is, this was anticipated, though, because we had a little bit of a cushion in the debt service line, if you remember, to your budget process for FY23, but some of those bonds didn't materialize, so the debt service did not end up getting spent. Just as a quick reminder, we did not build in that same cushion in the current year's budget FY24, so unlikely that this turn back would reoccur next year. And then the other major category was staff vacancies. Library, police, health department, parking, parks, council on aging, youth services, all had vacancies that were unable to be filled, and as a result, were, were resulted in slack in the budget, so to say, and that becomes free cash. So about $825,000 was the total turn back in that regard. I will say that having been doing budgets for a long time, this has shifted over the years. We previously would have turn backs from things like insurance premiums and other things, but I think we've really ratcheted down on a lot of those through typical cuts, which then sort of became institutionalized into the budget, and have resulted in a pretty on-point budget in terms of, you know, what was budgeted and then what was spent. So that was the other big story there. The next thing that is, you know, on the income side, staying on that, meals tax really experienced a decent increase over the previous year. In large part, this was buoyed by, this is inflation working in the other direction, so the cost of meals going up resulting in the meals tax being higher, resulting in more coming into the city. However, that was offset a little bit by substantive reduction in building permits, which I know is often a source of conversation every year when we do this. So, to be clear, building permits were down 37%, but about half of that reduction was because of one project, Boston Way, which appeared in the last year but not this. So if you took Boston Way out of the conversation, you'd have an 18.6 reduction. So still, you know, still meaningful, but maybe not as scary as a 40% decrease, and we talked a little bit about that. So license and permits overall comes down, but there are some, some areas, sort of bright areas in there as a result. State Aid came in a little bit higher. The last thing on this sort of income side is, you know, the colorful chart that, or table that Ethan puts in with the percentages, and then he kind of gives you the green for a big increase and reds. There were really two areas that were most substantial. Number one was, we had the fireboat incident sink. We got an insurance payout as a result, about $550,000, not to be confused with the Harbor Master, also unfortunately lost a boat. That boat has been replaced. You may remember we did that. So the fireboat settlement came in from the insurance. Because it was not utilized before the end of the year, it basically closes to free cash, so that will come back to the council in some form at some point to be spent for any lawful purpose, because now it closes out to free cash. So that was the fireboat. And the second one is a huge increase in our interest income, so, or investment income, if you will, and that's a 1,000% increase, and that's because for many years, we essentially were making nothing on savings, so to say, as most people would probably recognize from their personal lives, and as a result of the increasing rate environment, we're now turning, you know, in that 5%-ish kind of range, and that's resulted in a fairly large increase. And just to give you a number, it's, you know, was up, it's up, as I mentioned, about 1,000%, it's about $500,000. So you have 500 from the fireboat and 500 from interest income, it's about $1 million, and effectively, that offset some of the reductions that we saw as well. On the enterprise fund side, water was plus 16% in revenue, which is as a result of the rate increases that we made. Sewer was only 2.4%, but you'll remember when we did the rates, we had an increase in water, but not quite the same there. Harbor Master was down as well, but they've had a couple of good years, and, you know, so in the grand scheme of the larger trend, it's not as alarming, but was definitely down a little bit from the previous year as well. And then we went through and continued on. The last thing I would just say is that, trying to highlight, you know, the things that you may be questioning, there was some reduction in this CNI, the Commercial and Industrial, and basically, when you, we traced that back with the finance director, and I sent you some sort of materials today, this was part of it. A lot of that comes down to property valuations and equipment valuations for electrical, like I think the overall headline is, you know, pretty much as expected, fairly tight on the budgeting process, came in on point. And then, in the end, you know, free cash seems to be relatively healthy, buoyed by what we expect to certify in November seems relatively healthy, with debates abound to come, I'm sure, on tax rates. If I may, did I miss anything, Ethan, that you would suggest? And I'll turn to my committee members as well, if they have anything that I may have missed that was of interest. And it was three to zero in committee to receive and file.
Thank you, Counsel Zied. Discussion. All right, roll call on receiving and filing. Receiving and filing Communication 499, Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Dennehy?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Next is a motion to approve Transfer 166.
Second.
This is a transfer from the Police Station Locker Rooms Project to Body-Worn Cameras. Two different accounts, but both related to the same. The transfer requested is about 59K. So first, on the source side, people probably remember this project. The locker rooms were quite tired at the police station. They have undertaken the project, and it's pretty much done. There are some punch list items that remain, which is the difference between the 80K or so that's left in there, 78, and the 60K. So they'll have enough money to finish that project. And this is going towards Body-Worn Cameras. This is one of those nights where it's hard to explain these well. But basically, the city had received a grant towards Body-Worn Cameras, received. As in, they filed and asked for the grant, awarded the grant, and so everything looked good. And then when it came time to reimburse, this was a reimbursable grant, so we outweighed the cash, and then they give us back the money. They changed their minds, in my estimation, in my read, in the sense that they only wanted to fund new cameras. And we already had purchased the cameras. This was to keep the program going, and I guess they didn't like that because they wanted to, new stuff, so that they maybe could fuel a statistic or something along those lines. So despite the award, they kind of backed up, to be blunt, and through some negotiation, they sort of said, okay, we'll throw you some money. I think it was around 10 or 12K or something like that to help five more cameras for the parking folks, which you've heard a little bit about. So unfortunately, we have the cameras. We are locked into a timeline. It's about five years from when the program started, so the money does have to be paid. In a sense, this becomes an interdepartmental transfer, so it's coming from police to police, and we are backfilling this. Last thing is that, obviously, we won't be relying on this grant again, so next year you would expect to see this in the FY25 budget. And Ethan mentioned, the finance director mentioned, that that is there. And the last thing is, we did ask about the patrol contract. It is up. You may remember, there was a, when the body cams became a reality, there was a side letter agreement, or whatever you want to call it, to work with the union on that. This is, that contract in whole is up. So this will need to be addressed in a more permanent fashion, and we would expect to see that contract when it's ready. It was three to zero in committee to approve the transfer.
Counsel Zied. Discussion. Seeing no hands, roll call. Transfer 166 to approve, Counsel Lane? Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Dennehy?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
And that's it for business, budget, and the meet on Thursday. Probably the two things that may be of note or interest is, we do hope to talk about Ordinance 129, which was the conflict rules for department heads. And number two was, continue our work on the $6 million roadway bond. Still trying for the end of the month, but maybe pending some invitations for Thursday. Folks can't make it, the DPS director namely, and a few others that were kind of requested. So that's it for budget, thank you.
Second committee's all. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, may I, just to add on, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add on that, for the conversation on Thursday, there is an amended version, and I don't know if people already know about that, but it should be posted on the Budget and Finance website. And the sponsor took in a lot of consideration, thoughts, feedback from everyone. So I encourage people to look at that version, if you're coming on Thursday to discuss the conflict of interest with department heads. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. All right, Community Services, Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, motion to approve Appointment 425?
Second.
Thank you. We had a conversation with the applicant, Madeline Whitton, today. We have a community service meeting going forward. She had put forward that she grew up in Newburyport, she spent a considerable amount of time in the library. She had moved away, and then when she had a family for job reasons and relocation, they came back to Newburyport. One of the things that was very exciting about it is, she's a user of the library and is very involved in the programming and appreciates the programming that goes on. We thought that it gave her a considerable advantage in being a fan of the library, to be on the board of the directors of the library going forward. We did talk about some of the financial responsibilities that are there. We talked about the search for a new head librarian and how that will bring, that will bring some level of change. Whether that resolves the ongoing dispute in the Labor Department there will, to be determined. But she seemed to be a very eager candidate to be able to step up and do some work going forward. Our recommendation was three to zero for recommendation.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Discussion. Roll call. An Appointment 425 to approve, Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Dennehy?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Motion to receive and file Communication 501?
Second.
This is a letter from Vladimir Novatny on the restoration of the Frog Pond. And if you will, I just want to give an update of what we spoke about. We invited the professor into our community services meeting. He attended via Zoom. Just as a form of background, he's a professor emeritus at Northeastern University. He's got over 50 years' experience in water restoration of natural resources. His work includes cleaning up the Everglades, Lake Okeechobee, Clear Lake, California, the lagoon in Vetis Inlee, the Milwaukee River, Lincoln Creek, Des Plaines River in Illinois, plus additional projects in Europe and North America. Why do I mention this? By the way, all of them have been cleaned up naturally, except Okeechobee, which had a setback due to a hurricane coming through and raising some of the phosphorus from the grounds and the sediment. I mention it because it's the professor's observation, based upon his experience restoring natural water settings, that the Bartlett Mall team may be over-engineering a solution for the Bartlett Mall. So we had him in, we invited him in, and we had a conversation about it. This letter is an attempt not to criticize, but to add perspective to the proposal going on. We recently had a community services meeting to review answers to the questions. And one question that was provided to them was looking for three to five references of similar situations. And we didn't get any references at all. And we were reassured that the technologies and the techniques they were using have been long in place and are historically accepted by many scientists. But so, but there wasn't anything that they could point to that said it was a true apples-to-apples type of reference. So at a high level, the real delta between the two plans, the city's core plan, and this suggests a different perspective, is the level of demwatering. Currently, the city plan is called for 100% demwatering and replace it with a liner. Professor Novatny suggests maybe 50% no liner, and you could have nature take its course with some of the existing biota that lives at the bottom of the lake. Both agree, though, that we need new water coming in. We need to maintain a steady water level, which means we need outflow pipes as well as wells going forward. So this letter, which I asked the council to receive and file, should be viewed as an alternative perspective. And as the Bartlett Mall team regroups on its plans to rebid this, the ask is that possibly they consider some of the points made within the letter itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Discussion. Counsel Khan?
Great, thank you, Council President. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to stay for the discussion of the letter, so my apologies for that. But I was there for the discussion of the Bartlett Mall project. A few things, I just want to make sure we're, you know, if we're considering this letter, I also encourage us to go look at the environmental report that was done three years ago. And there's also the Bartlett Mall Commission. When they were in formation, there were some other assessments. Before they came to the solution, there was a significant number of other environmental scientists who were involved to put together their kind of findings and what was kind of the situation, based on real observations there. You know, if we're talking to apples-to-apples in the first paragraph, the Florida Everglades, Des Plaines River, Lincoln Creek, Milwaukee River, these are not all the Bartlett Mall pond. So please keep that in mind when we're looking at experiences. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. Further discussion? All right. Counsel Wallace?
I just, I have a question. I missed the beginning part of the meeting, my apologies. What was the discussion on the wildlife? I guess I'm not very clear, is he saying that some of it would not survive if it was de-watered entirely? Or if it is de-watered, what happens to the wildlife that is there now? And maybe, I don't know if anybody can answer that, but I would think that's important. Thank you.
Counsel McCauley, if you want to answer that?
Counsel Preston?
I can make my attempt. So it'd be wonderful if somebody from the team were here to answer for it. But I did ask that particular question. And essentially, what I was told was that there are a number of turtles and frogs living in the pond. Nobody really knows how many. And the estimation was, and it's also important to note, that the Conservation Commission did put a timeline in place with this, that if they were to de-water the pond, it would have to happen before November 15th in respect to the fact that the, because the turtles and frogs would go into hibernation after the 15th of November. And that's part of, sort of what has made timings are very difficult on this. But so, if we were to 100% de-water the pond, the turtles and frogs essentially would find somewhere else to go. It is illegal for them to transfer them, because they may cause, bring disease with them to the new water source if we were to physically transfer. But the idea is that the frogs and turtles would find their way elsewhere. I asked particularly the question, well, where would they go? It doesn't occur to me that there's any water sources that would be habitable for turtles and frogs close by, if they're not crossing High Street, State Street, Route 1, those sorts of things. And the idea is that hopefully they would find their way to safe passage.
Thank you.
Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, simply to add to this is there, besides the turtles and frogs, there's a number of organisms that are actually alive in the pond today. It shows up in the environmental and water samples that have been taken going forward. So there's, in the city's plan, which, you know, it still has quite a bit of merit to it, so again, it's not a criticism. They're basically taking all the water out and they're starting over again. And so there would be, so the water would be cleaner right away, but the pond's coming back to life may take a little bit longer going forward. In the professor's view, the water getting clean would take longer, but the organisms themselves would be able to adapt and live a little longer. And coming back to full capacity of that type of environment would take less time. So it's a trade-off of one or the other. I know there's peer review papers on both of those types of things. But that's kind of the discussion that we had post the Q and A that went on with the Bartlett Mall itself.
I'm sure there'll be much more when we continue the Bartlett Mall discussion, so, further discussion. All right, roll call. Sorry, Counsel Dennehy?
So, just quickly, just kind of, I'm sorry, my channel is particularly squeaky tonight. And I just want to offer up some, a bit of topography to where the Bartlett Mall water source in conjunction to where the turtles and frogs might migrate to nearby. Sort of knowing the area, naturally, I think they would migrate into the cemetery across from the pond, and they'd make their way to the Hill Street Cemetery, and then to the lower end of the Hill Street Cemetery, where there is actually a bunch of natural water source down there for wildlife as well. So I just wanted to kind of offer that up, my theory, anyway.
Thank you, Counsel Dennehy. Further discussion? All right, seeing no hands, roll call. Okay, roll call on the motion to receive and file Communication 501, Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Dennehy?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel President, there's nothing more, but, and just as a note, we will get back on a more regular schedule. Again, we had taken a break over the summer, given schedules, et cetera, along the way, but we will get back to a Tuesday ritual that we've done before. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nothing coming out of general government, so Counsel Vogel, licenses and permits?
Motion to approve Application 157?
Second.
The License and Permits Committee met, and we spoke with Mary Ann Lawler regarding the St. Vincent de Paul Walk for the Poor. Done a number of years, quite familiar with it. This time, they're a little bit more off of the waterfront and a little bit more onto the main street so that they can be seen. About 75 people, it'll take anywhere between 20 minutes and a half an hour, depending on how long you're going to walk. It came out of committee with the majority approving and recommending for approval by the council.
Thank you, Counsel Vogel. Discussion. Roll call. Motion to approve Application 157, Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Dennehy?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
And Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Nothing, nothing further.
All right, Counsel Cameron, planning and development.
Thank you. Motion to approve Appointment 424, Jennifer Bluestein?
Second.
Thank you. I believe Ms. Bluestein is in the audience. Unfortunately, raised her hand a little too late, but that's okay. So we did vet these appointments last Thursday. Jennifer is relatively new to Newburyport, but she relocated back to this area. She's originally from Ipswich, has lived in New York City, Washington DC, amongst other places. Her background is really, is a policy generalist, self-described, working in philanthropy, nonprofit, and a bit for government on a variety of different types of issues, including education. She stated right up front that she's not a lawyer in terms of her applicability to the planning board, but she does have a desire to learn more and feels like she would have a lot to offer in different perspective. She was asked in committee about how she would engage with different groups and different points of view, and she's really interested in getting things done and certainly open to listening to different perspectives. One council member tried to bait her on a couple of different local issues, but she did not take the bait on it. But I think she answered quite well, just in terms of kind of the planning board, working as a team, and again, trying to kind of deliberate and get to best results and really listening to people. And we did approve her appointment, three to zero in committee.
Thank you, Counsel Cameron. Discussion. Roll call. Roll call.
Motion to approve Appointment 424. Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zied?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
Motion to approve Appointment 432. Brian Balcom to the Planning Board as an associate member.
Second.
Thank you. And I should have mentioned Jennifer Bluestein would be an associate member for the Planning Board. So Mr. Balcom moved to Newburyport 2014. He's a mechanical engineer by trade and consults on various, particularly electrical, projects, has some history working with and for the Army Corps of Engineers. He'd been on his own, where he grew up in Natick, on the Planning Board there, which is an elected position, was on there for five years. And, you know, talked a lot about different perspectives of, you know, a citizen, you know, of any community having certain rights and points of view, and landowners having certain rights, and you have to look at all the impacts, and thinks he has something to add to it. Again, another person who, you know, just does understand already sort of that zoning doesn't really give you a definitive answer in all cases on things that a planning board might need to decide, and very much interested in process, putting aside his own biases, and I think he'd be a good addition to the Planning Board, and we did approve his appointment three to zero.
Thank you, Council Cameron. Discussion. Roll call.
Motion to approve Appointment 432. Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zied?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
And motion to approve Appointment 433. Charles Palmasano to the Planning Board.
Second.
So this name should be familiar because we appointed him as an associate member a few months ago. Current member, Richard Jaeger's moving out of town, so there's a vacancy. And, yeah, I believe our process is going to be for us to actually, if somebody needs to move up in the pecking order, that we would vet these by the council, and that seems appropriate. So, again, we had approved him a few months ago. He was not able to come to this meeting, but per Planning Board Chair, Rick Tainter, the meetings Mr. Palmasano's attended so far, he's been very helpful, has a good perspective, as people may recall. He's a local attorney and does have a lot of experience, you know, with closings in particular, but other forms of land use, and that's a good person to have in the mix on the Planning Board. So this would be to take him from associate member to member, and we did approve this three to zero.
Council Con?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I just had a question for the chair, and I can't answer this, but I know we have always, it's two associate members, and then you have the Planning Board members. In terms of that moving when there is a vacancy, does that go to that who was probably, has the earliest kind of tenure in that position to get that automatically? Or do you happen to know how that, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I don't know if you know the answer to that?
I don't. One would assume that, but I can check, I can check that out. One would assume it would be based on seniority.
With Director Port, or is anyone on to answer, or no?
I don't think so. No. Wait, I do see Andrew Levine. Andrew Levine, can you answer?
Andrew Port is on there.
I'll go back and ban him tonight if that's all right.
Which other?
So to answer that question, at the time, there was only one associate member, so that's why it was Mr. Palmasano. We were looking for another alternate, another associate, and then we found two that we were interested in in that time, and they opened up. So there was only one confirmed associate at the time, it was Mr. Palmasano's. He's our recommendation to become a full member, and then we'll have two associates to onboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director, Chief of Staff Levine. Did you have a question, Council McCauley?
I no longer have a question. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, roll call.
Motion to approve Appointment 433. Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zied?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
And just a friendly reminder, we're going to meet as a committee of the whole on September 21st for short-term rental. I will reach out in the next 24 hours just to try to pin down a couple of dates for follow-up meetings, so look forward to that.
Thank you, Council Cameron. Council Wallace?
All right. Motion to approve Appointment 431. Michael Hennessy to Tree Warden. All right, we met with Mike last week, oh no, that was, that was this, whenever it was. And typically, this, the Tree Warden position is the DPS Director or the Deputy Director, but because Mike is a certified arborist and already has been doing work with the Parks, the former Parks Department and now Parks Division, it made sense to appoint him as the Tree Warden for both parks and for the street trees. He claims himself to be a tree enthusiast. He's worked for Parks since 2016, and he worked as a contractor to the city for many, many years before then. So this would expand what he's doing, you know, he's doing the parks already, but he's expanding it to the street trees. So that would be working with the Tree Commission, and along with his position comes a stipend, I think it was about $12,000 or so, which I think in the past it's been $10,000. So I assume we're going to be getting that transfer in at some point. He was saying he wants to make sure that we don't just cut trees, but we care for them. The committee talked about the need for a lot of maintenance and possibility of a work order system for trees, but the director, Director Amaral was there and said, you know, that will all be integrated just as the DPS work order system, whether it's parks, trees, anything like that. I had a question about the different rules for process for parks trees versus street trees, because there is no public notice for removing trees in parks. So I suggested, I mean, that's an ordinance change, but I would like to see some public notice for parks, because I've, as the Ward Counsel, I've gotten calls like, "They're cutting down a tree in Atkinson," and it's just good if people know and understand why they're coming down. And then we also discussed, this is a good example of merging parks with DPS. It's sharing talent, sharing equipment, and creating efficiencies, so, and I'm sure the director and deputy director of DPS are very happy to delegate this to somebody who is very skilled, because they have plenty of other things on their plate. So the committee recommended approval, three to zero.
Thank you, Council Wallace. Discussion. Roll call.
Motion to approve Appointment 431. Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zied?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve Appointment 434. Jalen Howard to Assistant Harbor Master, Shellfish.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Jalen moved to the area about two years ago. He has been in the Coast Guard, so moving into the Assistant Harbor position is a natural transition. He wants to make sure the public is safe and is educated on the water. He's been out on the mouth of the river often, so he is very, very familiar, very qualified. He says he's seen rescues, he's seen unfortunate situations, and he fully understands the danger of the river. What was interesting that I learned in this process is the city has about 18 harbor, Assistant Harbor Masters. And in speaking with the Chief of Staff, he was saying that because of state law and the charter, that the City Council should be approving, you know, all 18 of them as they come in, because they do have enforcement responsibilities. So that was fine. So he's a very good candidate, knows the area well, is very excited to work whatever hours he has to and work with Hall Hog, the Harbor Master. And we recommended him for approval, three to zero.
Thank you, Council Wallace. Discussion. Council Con?
Sorry, Council, thank you, Council President. Just a question about special police officer, and I guess I'm just seeing that now. Was that explained, what that means? And did you guys talk about that?
It was, I want to defer to Chief of Staff Levine, if he would. It's, there's a lot to this, but we're all still learning, I guess.
I'm so sorry, I couldn't find here the question.
Special police officer for this appointment? Can you just explain what that means?
Special police officer, sorry. My understanding is that it's related to the responsibilities that he has on the ladder. I can see Council Lane in the sand race, who might know more than me on this level of course.
Council Lane?
Hi, if I could, special police officer, that's exactly what it is, so they have police powers in terms of impaired operation and, I believe, no arrests on the water. That's about the limited scope that they have. I know that they have to, years ago, we would have to go through a part-time police academy. I'm not sure if they've changed the post act, but as far as I know, they go through a part-time police academy, and they do have those powers on the water, as I understand.
Council McCauley?
Yeah, it's actually a state law that was changed not too long ago, where it requires, it's part of, it's part of police reform, and so they wanted folks that were, they wanted folks on the water who were arresting people to have proper training. They had to be able to handle and be trained with a handgun, and armaments, et cetera, along the way. It's, I believe it's actually part of our, what do we want to call, certification that the Police Department actually has to go through, and the Harbor Master is actually included with that. So when we see, as part of the upgrade process that's been going on with the different Harbor Masters, what we're seeing is that we're seeing a lot of former police officers, former military, because they already have the certification training for both carrying weapons as well as being able to make arrests on the water.
Thank you, Council McCauley.
Just one last follow-up. So that's a three-year term, probably by state, and we don't need to put that in ordinance? And I guess I was just trying to make sure, because I know shellfish, ordinance, Assistant Harbor Master, we have that in ordinance, and this one I just didn't see. So I don't know if we have to update later, or it's a three-year term?
I do not know the answer.
I think it's a three-year term.
Well, yeah, it's a three-year term.
Okay. Council, I mean, Council Lane, do you have your hand up still to answer that question?
I'm sorry, I'll take it down.
Okay. Director of Staff Levine, do you want to answer that question? Are you able to?
It is a three-year term according to the laws.
Thank you.
To the law. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Motion to approve Appointment 434. Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zied?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
All right. Taking out of order, motion to approve Ordinance 159, Handicap Space at 42 Market Street. All right, this is sponsored by the counselor from Ward 3, who is also our council president. This is pretty straightforward. It's for one space in front of 42 Market Street for a period of two years. The situation is they have an extremely narrow driveway, and a letter came in from the resident saying his wife is ill and she uses a wheelchair, but they can't fit the wheelchair and the car in the driveway, so she cannot get into and out of the driveway in her chair. So they have to use a spot, they have to park out front and do it from the sidewalk. So in order to be able to park near their home and make their trips easier, the parking clerk agreed that this warrants a handicap space. Committee approved it three to zero.
Thank you, Council Wallace. Discussion. Roll call.
Motion to approve on first reading, Ordinance 159. Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Vogel?
He only gets one vote. Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zied?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
All right. Motion to collectively receive and file Communication 497 and 498.
Second.
All right, these are two communications from resident Jim McCarthy. One is regarding banner locations in the city, and the other is regarding a specific request to put a banner on the High Street Bridge over Route 1. So I'll try, I'll summarize his request and then talk about what we discussed in the meeting. So a few years ago, Mr. McCarthy had worked with some counselors to rewrite the sign section in the ordinance. So there is, for signs in the public way, it's under streets and sidewalks, so that's why it came to our committee. For private signs, for signs on private property, that's in zoning. So right now, we're just talking about the signs in the public way. So the banners out there say you can, they can go at Acton Common, you've probably seen them up there, or they can go at the Fuller Field fence. What he is asking is if we can designate additional areas within the public way. So initially, he suggested the fence at the Little River Trailhead and the High Street Bridge over Route 1. And he is a big proponent of the banners because they're temporary. They go up for a couple of weeks and then they come down, theoretically. Enforcement's another issue, but, so in his second letter, he is the treasurer of the Newport Parks Alliance. He was asking to, for permission to hang a sign up on the Route, sorry, the High Street Bridge over Route 1. Since he's written that letter, he's researched it, and that is not city property, that is Mast Dot property. So he is withdrawing that request, but there's a provision in the ordinance that with the mayor's approval or mayor coordinating with the state, there could be permission to put the signs up, maybe more hassle than it's worth, but, so, we did talk about, well, so those are the two letters. Okay, so, we did talk about possibility of where else could you put banners, and we didn't really come up with anything in the committee, but, you know, we can discuss it on the floor in a bit, if anyone's interested. He himself is going to ask the mayor to coordinate with Mast Dot and see if there's something that can be done when it is state property. And so the committee, we advised him that this is just a communication. If he wants to change an ordinance, he's going to need to find a sponsoring counselor and then bring some changes forward. So we talked about, do you just work on changing the banner section, because that's simple and just one little piece? Or are there other pieces of the sign ordinance that you would want to change? So we said if you do just the banners, that could probably happen, you know, in the next few months. If you're looking at the whole sign ordinance, that could probably take a while. So he's kind of thinking about what he wants to do, but, you know, we were in agreement that there are some things that probably need to be updated in there. So we recommended three to zero to receive and file it. And I'm also just curious what the council thinks about, you know, sign changes in the future, updating them. Thank you.
Discussion. Council Vogel?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'll just add a couple of words to that. Over the years, I've been a city councilor, the subject of signs has come up quite frequently, especially in the earlier years, you know, 10, 12 years ago. It's always been a matter of the enforcement and the taking the down that really needs to be discussed the most, and also when the wind blows and they get, you know, loose and so on and so forth. So we've gone through this a number of times, including signs on the, you know, A-frame to be discussed the most. And also when the wind blows and they get, you know, loose and so on and so forth. So we've gone through this a number of times, including signs on the, you know, A-frame signs and everything else. I mean, you're going to open up a can of worms if you want to, or maybe just go after the banners.
Thank you, Council Vogel. Further discussion, Council Preston.
Yes, thank you. I just want to add, so I recently was contacted by people who are involved with the Documentary Film Festival, which is coming up next week, I think, actually this weekend, but about putting banners on lamp posts downtown. And I didn't have an answer. So I actually went to the Chair of License and Permits, who also didn't have an answer, who recommended the city clerk, who also didn't have an answer, who recommended that to go to the Chamber of Commerce. So I would just suggest that that would be something that we could include in that because it, it doesn't appear that there is a clear ordinance on that, but it, you know, it has been done in the past. How it got done, nobody seems to really know, but it would be good for us to at least think about that, of how it could get done in the future.
Thank you, Council Preston. Further discussion. Council Donahue.
Thank you, yes, if I may. I actually did get an interesting answer, interesting to bring up. I guess there is a piece in the ordinance that where they're not supposed to be putting anything on the utility poles or lamp posts, and I think even when people do it for yard sales, it's not even something they're supposed to be doing, primarily because they don't get taken down. But I think it is in the ordinance that you can't legally advertise on their utility poles or lamp posts. So that's, to my understanding, anyway.
Thank you, Council Donahue. Further discussion. All right. Roll call on receiving and filing 497 and 498.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Wright.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
Council Cameron.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
And nothing further to report. We will meet as scheduled for our next meeting.
Thank you, Council Wallace. Good of the order.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Wright.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
Council Cameron.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
And nothing further to report. We will meet as scheduled for our next meeting.
Thank you, Council Wallace. Good of the order.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Wright.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
Council Cameron.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
And nothing further to report. We will meet as scheduled for our next meeting.
Thank you, Council Wallace. Good of the order.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Wright.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
Council Cameron.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
And nothing further to report. We will meet as scheduled for our next meeting.
Thank you, Council Wallace. Good of the order.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Wright.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
Council Cameron.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Very efficient they run.